February already. I was supposed to say that last week. So, some announcements. We're now in the midst of the pays you throw totter selection period. And we have a reminder here from the Department of Public Works wishing to remind everyone, currently on the Town Refuge Collection, that due to the new pays you throw system, you must choose your waste cart by March 10th. And this can be down on the town's website. And I'm beginning to see signs all over town reminding people to do it. And I received a postcard, so I presume most people-
Yeah, I did too, which you can send the postcard back, but if you didn't get the postcard, you should either go onto the town's website, or you can call DPW and they'll-
Yeah, and here's the phone number.
...walk you through.
So, number again is 617-730-2156 for to make your selection. You can also send in the postcard, or do it on the website. Any other announcements? Selectman Franco.
So, I had the pleasure of attending the Pan Lunar Asian New Year Celebration over the weekend. I know I saw Selectman Green there as well, and I'm sure there were others-
You saw me there, too.
-floating around in a bag.
Yes. We talked extensively.
We did talk extensively. It's all coming back to me in my own age.
Tell me about it.
It was a great celebration, thanks to Baffin, the Brookline Asian Family Network, to the Department of Diversity Inclusion Community Relations, who co-sponsored, to Chris Chania-Salket and to Chi Chi Wu for pulling together yet another great celebration. I also want to say that we have kicked off the Senior Tax Committee that was convened as a result of passage Article 34 at the Fall Time Meeting. We had our first meeting, our sort of organizational meeting, last Wednesday, and we're going to start meeting monthly from here on out. So, I'll preview the meetings as we get closer to the next meeting date, but work has begun.
Selectman Green.
As Selectman Franco said, I was at the Lunar New Year Celebration. It was a great celebration. It's actually kind of fun, even for an older person, although it's really geared towards younger kids, you know, younger people. Unfortunately, I was only there part of the event, because all of us were also at the memorial service for Frank Farlow, an activist Brookline fixture and voice of kindness, as characterized by the tab. And I'd like to use this opportunity to, I guess, for the record, just mention a quote that his son Jed gave at the memorial service that was reprinted in the tab, that I think really captures who Frank was and his significance to us going forward. And that quote from Jed Farlow was, "First, we need to take care of and protect each other. But second, and this is the hard part, I think Frank would encourage us all to care for more people, to spend more, to spend some personal energy and sacrifice personal comfort to widen the circle of people that you know, that you care about, and that you care to protect. For Frank, that came naturally. Let's try to follow his lead in that." And sort of along those lines, you know, we will be issuing a statement on issues related to immigrants and refugees that Frank was very, very concerned about and very active in addressing later on in this meeting. But I think those are words that are quite profound, and people should think about as we go forward in these troubling times.
Selectman Dela.
Yeah, I just want to add, because I was saying this to her at the event, but Chris Chania-Salket has done a fabulous job with the Pan Asian event, and I promised to say something to Mel on her behalf, so you'll have to convey that for me. But I've been going for a few years, and it was just a little small thing, and this time it was bursting at the seams, and there was all sorts of lively dancing and so forth going on, and lots of, wasn't, many Asian people. We actually have a 17 percent Asian population in Brookline, but it was, it was many people, you know, many people who wanted to just come and see the fun. And so, I think Chris has had a huge amount to do with that, turning that from a very small, somewhat sleepy event a few years ago into what it was today. And I was actually recommending to them that I think that they needed to move next door to the Shlun's Gym, because now they need more space for their activities. But I did want to pass along to Mel that I thought she deserved great compliments for the, yes.
And Lloyd's here as well, so you can pass it on to her.
Yes. Tell Lloyd, her boss, that I thought she deserved it.
And I'll just mention that Mr. Kleckner is in Washington attending a National League of Cities event in his role as the president of the MMA, Mass Municipal Association. So, his able deputy, Melissa Goff, is sitting in Mr. Kleckner's place. Okay, so, public comment. I hear Mr. Schwartz would like to-
Schwartz, will you?
Yeah. Right.
All right, I guess they can hear you.
Yeah, sure. Five minutes.
Okay. I won't take that long. All right, I'm here to discuss-
Just put the microphone over closer to you.
So, the TV audience can hear.
I'm ready. I'm here to discuss what I believe is the Transportation Board's illegal actions against Babcock Street. They keep picking on us. At the June 18th, 2015 meeting, number seven on the agenda was a discussion of Babcock Street. If you go to the minutes of that meeting, and number seven doesn't exist, Babcock Street is not mentioned, there was two to three hours of discussion on it. Then, if you go to the meeting that was held on the 13th of April of last year, there is no minutes published, and it was totally involved with Babcock Street. Then, part of the meeting was that they were going to have a response from the police and the fire department, which they should have done before. They had done all these changes. And that was to be done in part of June. This was at 6:30 16. The report has been finalized, sent to the Commission of Public Works, Director's Highways, and they were going to get it to us. So, what happened was, all of a sudden in June, we're looking at September, and nothing has been posted, nothing has come back. So, one of my associates called up the fire department and asked what's going on, and the fire department responded, "You're nuts. We sent our response dated July 6th. The police department dated 7/11, yet they weren't posted as they were supposed to be." See, when it comes to Babcock Street, the bicycle lobby, which is controlling the Transportation Board, they only put out what they want. And these are three cases, and there's more to go. So, that's one thing, and here's the paperwork, so that you guys don't have to look it up. Now, to show you how terrible the board is, I'm going to show you something. And when I say terrible, the Transportation Board has put the town of Brookline subject to criminal negligence. They have broken the law. Here is the law that they have broken, and I got it from the Department of Transportation. What the law is, they have illegal signage. Under no circumstances are you allowed to take a left on red into a two-lane highway. And if you go down Beacon Street, you go to Chapel Street, where it connects to Longwood, they have signs that say, "No turns except bicycles." That is 100 percent illegal. The town of Brookline will be sued big time, because you people have allowed that. And here is the law. Here are the pictures of some of the signs. I will send you, and you have to not laugh at me, my limited ability to take the pictures, but I have pictures of Chapel and Longwood, where the people, and again, the bicycles don't know, they're not supposed to. So, it is the fault of the Transportation Board. Whoever authorized these and put up the illegal signs has put the town of Brookline in severe jeopardy. Talk to your legal department. As I said, here are the laws, here's the interpretation. It's Section 2B 54, no turn on red signs, and it lists all the different things. So, like I said, I'm prepared. And other things, I'll give you one other one, like this test on Beacon Street, that they sold you a bill of goods on. Well, the reason the Department of Transportation wasn't letting them do it is here's something they probably never showed you, telling you that they had not filled out the forms correctly, and until they did, they didn't want it done. But finally, they allowed them to at least give it a test. But it's not going to be passed, because they don't have all the things listed here. So, you have a rogue board, and they do what they want. And I know I got an email from you saying, "Well, you know, we'll see what's done." Well, you can't see what's going on, because they're not posting. For the first meeting in June, we had 90 people, and it was about 10 to 1 against the board. And the meeting in April was even a greater participation, with more people against it. How can you, as selectmen, understand what's going on if nothing is posted?
Okay.
So, that's it. You can have my paperwork, because I know you need it.
Yep. I'll just, our public comment policy is-
Public comment.
Right. But I will say that I was at the last meeting, and it was regarding Babcock Street. And, you know, I will, my observation was, it was a board who was solicited public comment, and I had the feeling they were listening and trying to craft some kind of compromise that satisfied, you know, a lot of people. Now, whether they satisfy everybody, I don't know.
If you get the minutes of the two meetings I discussed, you see it was 10 to 1 against-
Yeah, well, this meeting, there was a diversity of views, and the board seemed to be listening. So, you know, having run many public meetings myself, and I'm sure other members of the board have attended public meetings, and-
I will just say, the Transportation Board unfortunately has kind of a long history of being very slow to get their minutes done. And so, I don't think it's directed just at you. This has been a problem for them for a long time. But the second thing people should know is that when they make a final decision, there is an opportunity to appeal it up to this board.
Right. We understand that.
Yep.
But the main thing is, you've got to straighten out these signs.
Yep. We'll look at the signs.
Yeah. And you've got pictures, and you've got the law. And I spoke to a big-time lawyer, a criminal lawyer. She's a criminal lawyer, and she was voted, two years ago, the number one criminal lawyer in the country. She was with-
Okay, we have to move on.
All right. But anyways, she said the town is seriously liable for big bucks.
Okay. Yep. Thank you.
Okay.
So, the next item is a question of appointing Pat Maloney, Director of Environmental Health.
But we didn't do the minutes, I think.
Ah, 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 the minutes for January 31st. Jumping ahead.
Yeah. Anxious.
Anyone have any changes I submitted?
I have taken some, yes.
Yeah, I have a few changes. Okay, so I'll move that we approve the minutes as amended for January 31st, 2017. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now, we can move on to the appointing Pat Maloney as the Acting Director of the Health Department effective today.
Yes, you should have in your packet a memo from the town administrator. Although they are pretty close on candidates, they're making good progress. There is going to be a need, especially during budget reviews, to have a representative of the department, so he's recommending the appointment of Pat Maloney as Acting Director of the Health Department effective today.
Okay. Could you give us some sense of the processes we use to identify candidates for a permanent position?
We have the HR director here. I think she might be able to tell you a little bit more about the process that they've used to recruit.
Ms. DeBeau.
I didn't mean you, Melissa. I mean whoever can do it.
I'm so glad I'm here tonight. We are using a selection committee that we, not a selection committee, a screening committee that is comprised of members of the community. Do you want me to list them? It might be hard. Okay. Members of the community, as well as some of the boards that interact with public health director on a regular basis. We have recruited broadly across the country. We have candidates that we will be interviewing on the 13th and the 17th, primarily from the Northeast, but there's one individual outside of the Northeast as well. And we're hoping it will go through quickly.
Yeah. Can I, you know, I always raise the issue of whether your candidate pool is diverse. I guess here, I want to just make sure that both the screening committee, or the screening committee has a diverse selection of people. And of course, I'm always concerned about African-Americans. But, you know, this town is, has a huge Asian population, and I hope that there's some representation of that population on the screening committee, as well as on the, in terms of the candidates that you're able to identify, you know, to the extent that that's possible. I think we can't overlook the fact that this large segment of our population really needs to, you know, be a part of everything we do.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe that's a question regarding-
Was that a question? The screening committee, we do not have an Asian, or Asian-American individual on our screening committee. However, we do have a very broad group of applicants from all over the world, literally, and I think almost every nationality.
Going forward, I hope you take my comments, you know, to heart in terms of screening committees representing the diversity of our community, particularly that segment.
I will. Thank you.
Okay, so-
We do have an Asian-American on the finance director.
That's great. I mean, there's a broader question than just that.
Okay, so I'll move that we appoint Pat Maloney as Acting Director of the Health Department effective February 7th, 2017. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item is the Recreation Department Personnel, question of authorizing the filling of the Assistant Recreation Directors. Anyone here?
Well, so Lisa was not able to make it, but we had been talking about this position. Melissa Petit recently left to become the Recreation Director in Lexington. So, Lisa is very anxious to start the process to fill that position. It's a very critical position in the department.
Yeah, I just want to say Melissa's been with the town for many years, and, you know, is a go-getter, and we're going to miss her, but this is a great opportunity for her.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions?
I think I'll just steal Selectman Green's line about looking to recruit the most diverse applicant pool possible, and working with not only Ms. DeBeau, but also Dr. Gellino to ensure that broad outreach occurs.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll move that we authorize the filling of the Assistant Recreation Director vacancy in the Recreation Department. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The next item is the question of granting permit to Jewish community housing for the elderly for the removal of a public shade tree located at 12 William Street.
Yes, please, if you could, I would project it. Thanks. We have a few renderings to show.
It's amazing the things we get involved in.
Yes, it is. But this is, was my understanding that this, the removal of this tree was to comply with a request by neighbors as to how the entrance to the garage was configured?
That's correct, Selectman Daley, exactly. There's one public shade tree that needs to be removed on William Street in order to accommodate that request. And that request was made by the Butters in the rear condominium building. And it also helps with the circulation of the parking, and the traffic, and the loading. It will all be done within the property now, with access from William Street. And we did have a hearing before the tree warden pursuant to the requirements of Chapter 87. This permit was originally part of our request for a waiver, and so, it was my opinion that this could be dealt with at the Zoning Board of Appeals. We are in the midst of that hearing process, and it's going very well. We've agreed to retain a peer reviewer for the design, and that's ongoing. We've got a lot of positive feedback from the design peer reviewer for the town. In addition, there is a traffic peer review and parking peer review that was recommended by the Transportation Board and the ZVA, and we've agreed to do that. So, we're probably in the middle of the zoning board hearings, and we requested that this permit be part of the comprehensive permit. It's my opinion that it's a local permit. However, with all due respect to the tree warden and town council, they have indicated that it's their opinion, and there's sort of a split between 40B practitioners on whether this type of a tree removal permit can be before the ZVA, or has to go through the local process. So, we have deferred to the town's directive on that, and we went before the tree warden and had a public hearing. We notified Butters, where there was a sign posted on the tree, and it was also published in the local newspapers. And the way that Chapter 87 works is that if there is just one written objection, even if that party does not appear at the hearing to state their objection, then the tree warden cannot issue the permit to remove the tree. Then it has to go to the Board of Selectment. So, what happened on January 24th, when we had the hearing with the tree warden, and the tree planting committee was present as well, there were two emails that Mr. Brady got simply stating their general opposition to the removal of the tree. One of those opponents retracted their opposition once they found out that JCHC proposed to replace that one tree with six trees, three onsite, three offsite, plus provide green rain guidance benches, a pocket park, and other greenery on Harvard Street. So, neither opponent showed up. One retracted their email, the other party did not, and so, therefore, we are now here before you to ask for permission to remove one shade tree, replace it with six, and in order, again, as you stated correctly, Selectman Daley, to accommodate the Butters' request to move that driveway out of the shared easement in the back and have the entrance be on William Street, which actually works better overall for circulation and parking purposes. So, I'm not sure we're going to have any renderings, but are there any questions? I'm here, I'm here this evening with Zoe Weinberg, who is the Real Estate and Innovation Director for Jewish Community Housing for the Elder, as well as Dylan Stevens, who is with Stan Tech, and the landscape architect for the project, along with Joe Geller, who just got off a plane, was trying to get here, but is not here yet.
Was he at the Super Bowl?
No. No, no.
Well, maybe we could hear from Mr. Brady while you're messing with-
Absolutely, because we also, there are also some photographs, I believe, that Mr. Brady would, can you get it up? Like to show you that we put on our stick, so.
Oh, something's happening. Well, maybe not.
Well, we should, we should hear from the greatest of all time tree warden from the town of Brookline. Sorry, I'm trying to get photographs up here, but.
Good evening, boys and women. My voice may be a little bit harsh from the rally this afternoon, but I do the best I can.
On the duck boat.
So, yes, the microphones are helpful, but it would have been better on the duck boats. What are you going to do? So, I've been honored to be the tree warden for the community for the past 15 years. Chapter 87 of Mass General Law was passed in 1899 and sets forth the requirements for the removal of public shade trees. And in terms of the question of why we're here for the past 15 years, as we've had these hearings, there have either been a significant number of objections, or frankly, anyone can object, I have objected to the removal. But Section 4 of Chapter 87 reads, "Tree warden somewhat cut down or remove or grant the permit for the cutting down or removal of a public shade tree if at before public hearing, as provided the preceding section, objection, writing is made by one or more persons unless such cutting or removal or permit to cut or remove is approved by the selectmen or by the mayor." That section was added in 1915, and hasn't been modified since then, and that's why we're here. The tree planting committee also sat in on the hearing. There was a citizen rule. As a tree warden, I only have two avenues to remove a public shade tree. One is if I deem it a public hazard, and the second is if it goes through the hearing process without objection. So, in this case, it did not rise to the level of a hazard, and there was a written objection. As council noted, there were two objections. One person, upon hearing further information after the meeting transpired, did remove their objection, that information specifically being, as noted, the tree is being replaced on more than a per-caliper-inch basis, so getting more caliper inches back than are being removed. Second, it was noted that it's an extensive permitting process, and like it was stated at the hearing, that it's likely going to be two years before they break ground. Until such time as a building permit is issued that would confirm the project is going to proceed, I will not remove the tree. So, it will not be a preemptive piece. So, those are two important pieces. I don't know if you want me to step back, and you can step in, or let me just speak to this.
No, you can talk about your tree.
Okay. So, for the tree itself, for those at home, a little science lesson for today is, this is a common form, this honey locust called Glorizia tricanthus, is the genus and species. You can see, looking at the street, a note to me was, it certainly has a small lean in of itself, frankly, not a big deal. Most of my street trees do, not at all unusual. On the street side, there's a significant pocket of decay from a former wound. If it was located on another portion of the tree, not a huge deal, but because it's on the opposite side of the lean, it means that I don't have good holding capacity in the wood most of the way around the tree. It also means that because of the size of that wound, I'm losing likely 25 to 30 percent of the pathways to carrying nutrients up and down, which is a long-winded way of saying the long-term prognosis for this tree is poor. Knowing that, combining that with the fact that we're replacing on a per-caliper-inch basis with commitments from the developer to maintain those trees that are going back in the ground in proximity, I feel that there is a good reason here for the removal and the replacement, so I do not rise an objection at all to the removal of this tree. Similarly, the tree planting committee, after their review, did request one additional street tree to be added to the plan on the Harvard Street side of the building. The proponent requesting the removal agreed to that. Combining that with their review of the plans, none of the three members of the tree planting committee registered an objection to removal of this public shade tree. So, we are left with the one, the individual who's objected. It remains standing, and that's why we're here tonight.
Okay.
So, Joe Geller, the landscape architect for the project, is here, and he can show you the site plan and exactly what's going to be greened and where it's going to go.
Okay, Mr. Geller, welcome.
Thank you.
Dashing from the plane to the Board of Selectment.
Exactly.
Can you just move the microphone over toward you a little bit?
Sorry. Okay. Nice night for coming off a plane and getting here, so I appreciate that I was able to make it. So, the site plan, I think you guys have seen a bit of this already, so I'll just go through it quickly. But this is the existing sanctuary building at KI, and next to that is the Epstein Building, which is going to be removed. And the new building here is going to be constructed for the two units of senior affordable housing. The site plan was designed around a number of key elements. The first one is, there was a lot of discussion about where the driveway would come into the building. We have an easement behind the building that shares the driveway now with the existing condominium development behind the development. But the residents of that condo development felt very strongly that sharing the driveway was a safety concern for them. Their kids play out in the back here, they were concerned about that. So, we looked at options for how we could avoid that, and one of the ways to avoid- So we looked at options for how we could avoid that, and one of the ways to avoid that was to actually put in a new driveway that created the access to the parking for the new development. And in doing that, as Tom explained, the tree happens to be right, the tree with that wound and the gash happens to be right in the middle of that driveway. So what we're proposing to do is to put a new tree between the new driveway and the existing driveway, maintain the existing trees, the rest of the existing trees along the street there, and then we're also adding a significant planting area between the building, or maintaining a significant planting area between the building and the street that's also going to be a stormwater garden, and also has seating and a place for people to gather on that side of the building, and then it kind of ends in this corner area here, which is also a place where there'll be seating and a place to gather. And then in the front of the building, we had originally proposed two new street, one new street tree and maintaining one existing street tree. We're also doing a drop-off along this edge of the street here, and one of the suggestions made by, as Tom said, by the tree planting committee was to, could we put a third tree in the front here? And so we agreed to do that as well. And then we'll be adding additional trees, as Tom said, off-site at a location of his choosing in the neighborhood. So I think that's it.
And I think, did I read something, maybe Tom can speak to this, but about some material, you were saying they were, this is kind of a hard life for trees out on Harvard Street, but there was some material you were going to do to make them flourish?
So we've talked to Tom about this project and also another project that we're working on using an approach called structural soil, which basically resists the compaction over the tree roots, and that's really what one of the real damaging things to tree roots is. So under the pavement areas, we'd be using the structural soil, which allows the roots to grow better without any compaction. And so that'd be where we're planting the new trees, so here, here, and here, and then we do the same thing where the existing trees are as well, using structural soil in those areas as well.
Okay.
Okay. Well, this is technically not a public hearing, but is anyone here who wishes to object or speak for this proposal? Now's your time. And I see none. Selectman Heller.
So I have a couple of questions. I'd like to get an idea from Mr. Brady, if I could. Would you have any notion, you said the long-term prognosis of this tree is poor, and I'm wondering what that means. Does that mean five years, ten years, fifteen?
With the, it's an interesting question. Once we get off the back edge of the sidewalk of the right of way, by law, I have no jurisdiction. Root zone for much of this tree currently is grown towards the building. It's tried to get under the sidewalk, and it's trying to get into a very old tiny piece of green space that's in there now. So when construction happens, that would certainly impact the root zone, which would have a dramatic effect on the tree. The other thing is just through the quirk of location, there's tall buildings on either side of the street right now, so it's a bit canyonized. So in terms of sun for photosynthesis and ability to produce food nutrients, it's having a tough time. So for prognosis, I would say, it's tough to say, maybe five to seven years, but with the lean and with the defect and the location of the defect, it makes it much more prone to storm damage any time between now and then.
Okay, so that means, if I follow what you're saying, that, and if we were to leave it, and it became a hazard, and you were allowed to remove it, the town would be responsible for removing it, is that correct?
Correct.
So in essence, this is a good deal for the town because JCHC is bearing the cost. Is that not correct?
This is a good deal for the town because JCHC is spending additional dollars to improve the growing conditions. From my mind, the principal benefit is the new and improved growing conditions that will come associated with the structural soil. When you build a sidewalk, essentially, traditionally, you compact it so densely to carry the cement and the people on top that it is essentially like a block of concrete under the sidewalk as well, and the roots can't penetrate. With structural soil, it can carry the sidewalk and the people, but it stays much less compacted. So the roots can now grow underneath the entire sidewalk zone, so, and you have a much broader storage capacity. And that's probably the greatest benefit I see, but I do agree it's a good benefit for the town.
Right. Plus--
Plus, it's a new trees.
Yeah, if the town did it, we would, it would be a one-to-one.
I have actually one other question. What are the new trees, what variety of tree are you planting?
In proximity to the, on the Williams Street side, it would be Glidetias as well, and on the front, it's likely to be a plane tree, which is a Platinus saccharifolia, which is the big plane trees that you see across the street on Beals and on Harvard Street. People kind of think of them as the camouflage bark trees. So short answer is the trees will match the character of what's in the neighborhood, because there will be three additional trees to be planted, probably on the center street stretch. Some of Center Street has Glidetias, and some of Center Street has maples as well, so we'll see what fits best.
Thank you.
Selectman Daly?
Yeah, well, I'm going to, I mean, we did see the letter from somebody on Williams Street about liking the tree, but I think, given Mr. Brady's comments about the fact that the tree's not in great shape, and also, this is being done to accommodate the nearest of Butters to this project, who are going to feel the effects the most, so I'm inclined to grant the request.
How, what's the caliber width of the trees, the new trees that are going to go in? Are they going to be saplings that take five or seven years to reach some height of significance, or are they going to be adolescent trees?
The size of the tree that can sustain itself, when you balance the root ball, which is the amount of roots that move with the tree when it's transplanted to be brought to its new location in the canopy, it's about, it's called three-inch caliber, which is three-inch thickness on the trunk. You get much more than that, and frankly, the root ball becomes too small, and the trees come under too much stress. And we've learned that lesson, we know it from science, but in some locations, traditionally, when we try and plant a four- or five-inch caliber tree, frankly, the three-inch caliber trees will catch up and go past it, because they're able to establish them much quicker.
Okay. Anyone else? And I'll move that we grant the permit to Jewish Community Housing for the Elderly, JCHC, for the removal of a public shade tree located at fifteen Williams Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the next item is a question approving an additional condition on the New England Treatment Access doing business as NEDA-registered marijuana dispensary. Ms. Correa, what is happening here?
Good evening, Patty Correa, First Assistant Town Council. So we're here tonight with a request by the police department to add an additional condition to the NEDA conditions. That's been discussed and vetted with NEDA, and everyone's on board. The original conditions provided that the selectmen would approve the alternate manager and manager of the retail operation in Brookline Village. There's been an informal vetting through the police department of NEDA security manager, and the police department just wants to memorialize that in the conditions. So the draft that you have has an additional condition for, which is actually pretty much block copied from condition three, it's just been adapted a bit to provide for vetting of the security manager by the police department specifically. And otherwise, the numbering is changed and cross-reference is amended just to reflect the current numbering of the--
So this is formalizing an informal practice?
Exactly.
Okay.
And Superintendent Morgan is here, and NEDA is here, if there are any questions.
Okay. Selectman Heller?
So does that mean that we will still approve the change in a director, officer, manager, or an alternate manager?
Exactly.
But not the security manager?
So there hadn't been any selectmen vetting of the security manager. It's been informal through the police department, and so now it's just formalizing that.
Well, we would do what the police suggest, probably, anyway.
So I have the regulations in front of me, and Regulation Number Nine requires that the licensee not make changes to the written operating procedures without seeking the approval of the board. So the thought is that that regulation doesn't, isn't broad enough to require approval by this board of the security manager.
So I believe there's language in the regulations that has a hierarchy. So a condition in the license trumps the regulations because it's site-specific, so the conditions are narrower than the regulations had contemplated specific to this site.
Okay. Don't use trump.
Pardon me.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Any other questions? Okay. We ready for a motion? I'll move that we approve the additional condition on the New England Treatment Access doing businesses as NEDA-registered marijuana dispensary, as detailed on page eleven-one of our packet. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Next item is our equal employment opportunity policy. Sandra DeBeau, Lloyd Geleno, and Kelly Race will appear to present and seek board approval of the selectmen's, of the equal employment opportunity policy. Mr. Geleno?
Good evening, I'm Lloyd Geleno, Chief Diversity Officer for the town of Brookline. I'm here with Kelly Race, Chair of the Diversity Inclusion Community Relations Commission, and Sandra DeBeau from the HR, Director of the HR Department. And as you know, we're here to present to you the EO policy. What I'll do is make some brief comments, and then while Kelly talks a little bit about the details of the change, of the modifications to the policy, and then Sandra can follow up with questions. This was significantly in several different ways. The first way is that it was a collaboration from several different town entities, HR Department, the commission, my office, the Commission on Disabilities, and the public. We worked through Kelly's leadership to get this document in a way that was consistent with all the town policies, including the anti-discrimination and sexual harassment policy. As you know, this is a long time coming, and we're glad that it's in the shape that it's in, and we are hopeful that you'll pass it tonight.
Kelly? Ms. Race, welcome.
Thank you. So as, I guess first I would like to recognize the contributions of Frank Farlow to this policy, who attended many of our committee meetings, and as you may be aware, that Frank's, I guess, respect for the English language extended quite far, and so his hand is definitely in this and was invaluable in both reviewing it many times over and giving us feedback, which he never pushed, but politely recommended, and I think we always adopted his recommendations. So currently, the town of Brookline doesn't--
Just Sam, I'm looking, as you say that, at the second paragraph where it says, "The town of Brookline strives to foster congenial, respectful, and professional relationships." That was, that was a description of Frank, I think. He was always, even if you disagreed with him, he was congenial and respectful, and so I, I don't know if he contributed to that sentence, but that's certainly in his spirit.
I agree. So currently, the town of Brookline does not have an equal employment opportunity policy. This policy was drafted some time ago and was approved by the Human Resources Board back in December of 2012. So when the new Diversity Inclusion Community Relations Commission formed, we, as you may know, have four subcommittees on that, and I chair the Employment Diversity Committee. So we had taken this up as something that was one of our goals, to have passed. We have worked on this to make the things like the protected classes consistent with the anti-discrimination, sexual harassment policy, consistent with the Diversity Inclusion Community Relations bylaws, and have gone through in trying to, I guess, take out any unnecessary or repetitive language. The key thing that we have added to this policy is Section Nine, the analysis and remediation. So the previous policy had said that we would audit and report, but it never said what would ever happen with that reporting. And now in the analysis and remediation says that we actually do look at those reports. We determine, we analyze and determine what they're telling us, and then we provide feedback back to the department heads and let them know how they're doing against, in their hiring, promotion, development practices, against the available workforce. So I'm saying that there is actually something that would come out of the reporting here. We have added in the chief diversity officer as having some responsibilities. We've also included the town administrator as having some responsibilities, again, in reviewing the information and giving feedback to department heads. This policy was approved by the Diversity Inclusion Community Relations Commission in September. It was approved by the HR Board in December. And as Lloyd had mentioned, we did have input from the Commission on Disabilities and the Women's Commission as well, and certainly from the HR Department. We have worked very closely to ensure that this is consistent with their policies and practices.
See, I'm, it's funny, when I saw this, I was thinking, okay, what's changed from our current policy?
There is no current policy.
Exactly.
Oh, that's why--
And I'm shocked that there is no current policy, so I'm glad we're putting this in place.
Well, to be fair to Sandra, though, the HR Board did come up with something, I think you said in 2012, right?
Yes.
And it just, we were in the midst of, you know, revamping what we're doing on diversity and inclusion, and so we decided not, for this board, not to vote on it at that time until we could get the input. So I, it, you know, it's not quite as negligent as it sounds.
Any, Selectman Franco?
So I've got two pretty specific questions, and then a more general, I think, policy question. On page five of the proposed policy, there's a requirement that department heads, managers, and supervisors undergo development in the areas of diversity and inclusion. And then the next sentence says, additionally, all employees shall be offered training in diversity and inclusion. I'm wondering why we're sort of separating between supervisors and managers and all employees, why we're not requiring everybody to undergo some training in diversity and inclusion.
I think that we had agreed that it would be a requirement for manager, for department heads and supervisors, because they have the responsibility for implementing the town's policies regarding diversity. For employees, that we want to make sure that that is offered. I don't, I think that there may be other limitations on, I think it was mainly around probably if people weren't able to attend the training, not that we would allow people to opt out of it, but if they happened to be on vacation at that time. We didn't want to make it a hard and fast requirement. As I recall, that was kind of what our discussions were about, so that somebody's job would not be in jeopardy if they didn't attend, that it is not mandatory for them if they happen to--
I think you also have to realize, so this deals with employment, so I think that's part of the focus of putting it on managers and people that, because there is another policy, the town has the anti-discrimination policy, right, which does apply more to, you know, employee-to-employee relations, you know, if somebody was treating one of their fellow employees badly, I think that might be more the area--
Well, so that may be the case, but I think that we teach people early and often, hopefully we have our non-supervisory employees grow and develop over time and become supervisors, and the more we can deliver this message, the better.
Well, I would, yeah, I would just say to follow up on that, that maybe we could develop an online thing that people could do at, you know-- develop an online thing that people could do, you know, at their, you know, work it into their schedule, and it wouldn't be, you know, tremendous expense or anything for the town to do that, but it might be eye-opening for people.
So, my second specific question, here I'm on page seven. The second full paragraph, the one that begins, "The report shall include a description of the manner and means." About halfway through that paragraph, there is a sentence that reads, "The report shall be, shall also include information regarding the employees and applicants' self-described sex, race, disability, and military status." Do we actually mean sex, or do we mean gender there?
There, we do, because we do ask, I guess it is self-identified, that we ask people for that information, and the way that we ask that information is, on the form, it says male or female, which is sex, rather than gender. I guess in my education, being on the Diversity Commission, that's my understanding, and that we actually do mean sex at this point.
Okay. As long as we're conscious about it. And then, my broader, overall question is, in that section, auditing and reporting, we're asking for a lot of information, and at least hinting that we're going to do something with it. I hope that there's been some thought to how we're going to use that information to filter back, to improve our recruiting efforts, to improve hiring, to have a more diverse workforce. So, it's not in here now, but I would hope that, should we adopt this policy, that there's been some thinking about next steps, and how that's going to filter back to some result-oriented improvements.
Yep. I think that there's a lot of thought about how do we gather that information, and that Sandra is working on a new applicant tracking or employee tracking system, so that we would have the resources, have the information available, get that information, and then would have the ability, again, to analyze it, and then provide the feedback.
Selectman Green?
Yeah, a couple of questions, following up on Selectman Franco's comment about self-identified sex, race, disability, and military status. I mean, I assume that we don't let people self-identify as Marine generals in their applications, so I think that probably should be taken out. I mean, you don't self-identify your military status, you prove it.
They do, well, they do self-identify first, and then, if you, if we need to verify that information, if it does give somebody, you know, some sort of preferential treatment in the hiring process-
If you're the fire department, for instance, and the police department give preference to it.
Right. The first step is always to self-identify, that we would never, you know, prove that information first. It's that they've got, an applicant has to indicate that, and it is their choice as well. If they don't want to indicate that, they don't have to.
I do think these guys have raised an interesting point, though, that maybe our forms shouldn't just say male or female, when our whole policy, our bylaw that we wrote a few years ago and everything is talking about, you know, maybe there should be at least one more option.
Selectman Green?
Yeah, my other comment, I actually have two comments. First of all, training, training programs, I hope it's, at some level, there is an effort to assess the training programs. It's all nice, all wrong good for all of us to go to diversity training, et cetera. We all know how many people respond to that, so assessment of that, of those programs should be a part of, you know, the process. I assume we do do that, but I just want to make sure that that is front and center. The other thing is, and I don't think you answered this, but you did touch on it, with respect to all the training reports, assessments, analyses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that we're imposing on, you know, the Commission, the Human Relations Director, et cetera, is there an issue of resources? I mean, is that something that you can do? Many times, there are obligations to do reports, and because no one has time to do it, they don't get done. So, I think we ought to make sure that we have the resources to actually carry these things out. So, I don't know whether that's a question, or just a statement that people ought to think about.
Selectman Heller?
Yeah, I'd like to just, just to step back a minute, and thank you for a very comprehensive policy. I mean, this is the first time we are adopting it, and I think it's an important statement, that it really is quite robust, and has a lot of protections, as well as requests for information, et cetera. And I think that's a very important point about it. So, I know, I'm sure Dr. Gellino put a lot of time in, in addition to the members of the committee, and I see a couple of members of the committee, I see K, Dr. Van Der Zeele here.
And the Human Resources Board also, I believe-
Yes.
Didn't contribute significantly.
Absolutely.
Yeah. We are starting with their work. Yeah. And a lot of work was done. So, that's for citizens that we appoint to another Board.
Right. So, I, just, please convey our thanks.
Thank you.
And I think that it's, it's an impressive effort.
Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
I'm very glad that the Commission has really taken a lead in this, and really has produced this, as well as a number of other initiatives that we expected that would, when the Commission was first conceptualized and then developed. So, I'd like to thank you for all the work that you're doing, and just acknowledge that you're doing a lot.
Thank you.
I'll join the thanks, and be a little bit more specific. Obviously, I'm overjoyed that we're adopting an EO policy. I was particularly happy to see, as I touched upon earlier, that there's specific focus on career development here, that there's going to be an effort to regularly review training, to provide training to managers and supervisors, in hopes that it'll be passed along to frontline employees. I think that's key to growing a healthy and diverse workforce, and I think it squarely belongs in the policy, and I'm happy to see that you've anticipated my thoughts and included it without problem.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'll add my thanks, and offer something more tangible, and that's a motion to accept the policy. So, I'll move that we accept the Equal Employment Opportunity Policy as proposed. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
And Sandra, since, I don't think any of your Human Resources Board members are here, but please convey our thanks to them as well.
And our thanks to you as well. We know you had a hand in this as well.
Yeah, okay. So, the next item is the social media policy.
So, this is a policy that we were talking about for several years with Kevin Stokes in IT, and, you know, whether it should be a part of our technology policy in general, or whether it should be standalone. And we determined, in consultation with various folks, that it would be a standalone policy. I want to thank Leslia Noble, who really took the lead on this, working with Kevin, and the Subcommittee of the HR Board. We have a policy Subcommittee at this point. And the social media policy was very important to get in front of an issue that continues to change every month. I was going to say every year, but it really does change on a regular basis. And I think that what Leslia achieved most admirably is that it's really very simple rules, you know, be respectful, keep things confidential, abide by, you know, the meeting laws, protect confidential information. And I think that the scope of it, too, is really important, because we're talking about not only social media as it relates to the social media sites that we may have, but also when someone is using social media and representing themselves as an agent of the town, that whole off-duty nexus that we get into a lot of times with our government employees acting as agents on their own. And the other thing that was also very important, and Leslia can talk a little bit more about this, is the need to raise awareness that if you are going to put a Town of Brookline Twitter account for your department, or Facebook account, you have to really state the reason that you're doing it, and that we are, that there's a group of folks who will get together and make sure that we are presenting the Brookline brand, if you will. And so, one of the things that she adopted in this is a social media action plan. And do you want to, do you have anything you want to add, Leslia?
Leslia Noble, Assistant HR Director. The social media action plan was sort of an important part of this policy that came in sort of towards the end. What we really wanted to do was look at the entire town, wrap our arms around what's already out there, what do we have, what's working well, who has accounts, and centralize that a little bit, bring it back, have control over who has accounts, who are the responsible parties for those accounts in the departments, who are their backup people, what kind of hours are they spending on social media, looking at hours worked, and a lot of important questions and things that we need to know about. So, that action plan also allows us to look at social media use, which has really changed in the last four or five years. I think four or five years ago, we were talking about social media use and thinking that this would be the be-all, end-all, it would be the only way to communicate with our residents and with the community. And what we found is, it's a really important way to communicate with the residents in the community, but it's not the only way. And a lot of people are still going to the Town of Brookline website, and social media is a great way to communicate, but it's not the only way. And so, you know, how are we going to-
There's just some Westwoodites around who have adopted.
Some don't check their email.
What we learned, which was very interesting, was, does every department really need to have a Twitter page? And does every department really need to have a Facebook page? And, you know, or can we just leverage what we do have and combine them and use certain, just, you know, general media accounts or the website? And we needed to take a look at that and pull that back together. So, the action plan says, okay, department, if you would like to have a social media site, whatever that might be, or multiple sites, you know, give us your business plan. Tell us what you want to do with that site, what your goals are. Let's look at it again in a year and see if you're reaching those goals, and try to just keep a handle on how well these are working and what benefit we're driving from them as well. So, that was an important part of the policy.
I actually, I like what this form is doing, is it's imposing a structure, it's a structured way of thinking about the sites, and I think that's good. So, when, so when the department decides, okay, I want to have a Facebook page or whatever, they're going to fill this form out, and where does it go? What happens to it?
So, there is a committee, and it would be comprised of one person from HR, one person from the Selectman's Office, and one person from IT. So, that committee would get together and review these requests, and talk with the departments.
Selectman Daley?
Yes. I have a couple of issues. On page four, Section K, where it says admit mistakes, but if an error is made, it should be corrected, but not, not deleted, I guess, you just somehow indicate that. And I, maybe because I was reading this right after I was reading the Equal Employment Policy, but I, we're certainly seeing from our federal government, statements about various religious and ethnic groups that are offensive. And I think if anything goes up that is offensive under our various other policies, it should come off immediately, and not just be kind of, you know, some statement saying, you know, leaving it still there, but saying, well, we didn't really mean that, or something. I just think we have, given all of our other policies, our general stance in town, that if there is something that offends somebody due to, you know, the, all the protected classes that we have put into our bylaw, then I think that, I think that needs to be edited, to say if it's, you know, something that is antithetical to our values and it's offending people, it comes completely out. And you, if you need to, I guess you can reference that there was something in there that was offensive, and it's been taken out. But I don't think you should leave it up there just for the record, you know, to continue to offend people.
It's a good question. I think there's a couple of things that perhaps come into play there. One of the things that we did put into this policy is that our sites will not be accepting comments. So, there's a whole, and I could go on for probably a couple hours about this big issue, whether we can accept comments, or whether we will accept comments, and if we do, they have to be under certain conditions or not. And so, we have decided not to do that for any of our sites. So, comments coming in from the outside is not an issue.
Well, I'm thinking of an example where maybe, maybe one of our employees says something, perhaps not realizing that they're stepping on toes, and that, you know, that I would hate to see-
So, we do have the ability to have IT take things down.
Yeah. I just think you should edit that section, so-
But we do also have an obligation, and Kevin would probably be able to talk about this better, the CIO, but we have an obligation to maintain records. And this is a difficult area, it's a tricky area, it's something that's still not completely clear.
Well, maintaining our own records is different than keeping up something in the public view that might be offensive.
Or even-
I don't, I think we completely agree with you. It's just that we do have to preserve it, and when, if it's offensive to everyone, you know, then it would obviously be rectified. I mean, but we would have to keep, it is a public document that we have to maintain.
If I could make a comparison, it's kind of like the Selectman's Agenda, where we initially publish an agenda, if there are corrections, we add to the existing agenda, and then note what we did. It's the same kind of thing, so that people understand what the changes were.
Yeah, I get that, but if you're saying, oh, I didn't mean February 7th, I meant February 10th, yes, that's one thing. If you're, if somebody puts a comment out, though, I'm just suggesting that there are certain comments that somebody might put out on behalf of a department, that I would hope they would not, this would never happen.
But that raises another question, and that is, who is authorized-
Right.
-to add things to this account?
Right.
And does it go through any review process? So, does an employee decide on his or her own, you know, is there one person who's designated to do all the commenting with no review from anyone else?
Yeah, so that is the very reason we have this policy, okay? Because we can have interns just jumping in and off, so, one, it's, what is the purpose for having the policy? Who is maintaining it? Who's responsible for it? If someone did put up something offensive, there would be an investigation, a group of action taken.
But let's, let's step back from offensive, because we haven't defined it.
Well, no, but we have, we have other policies that define- We have other policies that specify groups that are protected, and I'm just suggesting that if somebody, you know, thoughtlessly, I'll say, says something that infringes on one of those groups, I don't think we ought to be leaving it up there. I realize we have to keep some record of it in our town, you know.
It would be the same as-
Archives, but it doesn't have to be in public view if it's-
Right. It would be the same as what's in a memo, what's on the website, I mean, they're the same rules. We, I think we agree with you.
But if you read this policy literally, let's divorce ourselves from the offensive remark. Let's say we're putting, we're putting stuff up there that's inaccurate, or even stuff that gets superseded, policy or, you know. So, if you read this literally, it's going to look like, our Facebook pages are going to look like word-track-changes documents, and I don't think we want that. And I, you know, other, other levels of government, you know, deal with public records, and- And, you know, other levels of government, you know, deal with public records, and you don't see exposed on the web or in Facebook, you know, crossouts unless, you know, there might be a time where you want to show a crossout just to highlight the fact that something's changed, but I would think that's more the exception than-
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to, like, have put changes in in boldface, just so, and somewhere state, oh, if something's been corrected, it's now in boldface, or something like that, so people knew there had been change made. But, yeah, I agree with Neil that you don't want to-
Well, so, there's a number of different ways you can maintain previous comments and supersede them. On Facebook, it's sort of a running dialogue, the same with Twitter, where you can post a newer message that supersedes a previous message that may have been incorrect or undesirable for whatever reason. On a webpage, you can unpublish content, so it stays on the back end of the website, on the server, it's just not publicly visible. We maintain a record of it, and if anybody wants to see it, it's there, it's just not visible at a given moment, and a topic of confusion. I think there are a lot of operational things that we can dive into. I don't know if this is the right place to do it, but one thing that I would hope that the Social Media Action Plan Committee thinks about is the security of these social media identities. I don't want to make too much of Russian hackers here, but there have been cases where the town's social media identities, and maybe I should clarify, I think it's actually been the town's websites have been hacked, and there's been what I'll call unauthorized content put up. I think that the security for our websites is probably better than security for, you know, the DPW's Twitter handle or the Transportation Department's Facebook page. And when launching a social media identity, I think there has to be thought given to, who's going to check this at 2:00 in the morning, or 3:00 on a Sunday afternoon, to make sure that there's nothing that shouldn't be up on the, posted from those identities. So, that's my two cents, I don't want to dive into operational details, because there are people far better at figuring out the specifics than I am.
I think there's a goal, as the Social Media Action Plan has, to identify authorized users. Who are the authorized users? Who are the authorized backup users? Who are the authorized supervisors? So that there are specific people designated for the use of those accounts, and that the IT director or HR, if needed, we can go right to those people, and we know who they are. And so, again, that's a way to pull this back in and have good control over it.
I assume I-
Yeah, go.
My turn. I'm wondering, I mean, I know that there are quite a number of accounts that the school department has, Facebook, there are various groups. I try, I find myself shy away from social media, but I'd rather talk to somebody on the phone, but I'm wondering whether, I mean, obviously, the school department in this respect would operate independently, but I'm wondering whether there's some, I don't know whether you call them lessons learned, or ideas generated, whether the school department has such a policy, whether we've shared this with them, whether we've had discussions about these issues.
A lot of collaboration going on between school and town HR. We're working together on a couple of policies, and some that may be school-town-wide, if we can have one policy that covers both, and we may be coming back to you for that soon. So, we have had a lot of discussions about this. We did originally have school department, school committee members working on this with us, that they have a lot of their own specific things that they need to address in their policy. It was determined had to be a different policy, maybe some of the things will be the same, but they are going off on their own to create their own policy. They're actually waiting for ours to be approved, and they're going to be using some of this. So, they're working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Can I, if I could just add to both Ben and Nancy's point, I mean, one of the reasons why we're putting these policies in is because these things are already happening, and we want to make sure that they are secure, and we want to make sure that IT is aware of them, and that we're all keeping our eye on it. So, that's the reason we're doing this, too.
I'll note on page six, in the section Protect Confidential Information, so it's Section 3E, so it says, "Town employees are prohibited from disclosing non-public record, confidential, or proprietary information the employee obtained as a result of town employment," and then it says Section, C-Section 3E for illustrations. So, it's within Section 3E saying, C-Section 3E, that's a bit of a circular reference.
Thank you, typo noted.
Selectman Dela.
Yeah, I have another concern on page five, and the personal use of social media. On Section A, Follow the Rules, second paragraph, you say, "In addition, personal use of social media must be in conformity with relevant portions of the town's workplace policies and all relevant laws and regulations." I think you should say, because I know it seems like a growing number of people who are, you know, heavily chained to their cellphone, to be constantly on some form of social media. I think you should say straight out there, you shouldn't be on social media for your personal account during working hours.
Is that practical?
Well, that's- A reasonable use IT policy, and it is not strictly prohibited, it's, would be very difficult to enforce, so it's a matter of reasonable use.
Well, maybe you want to say that, something more than check, I mean, if you have a policy on social media, and you're telling them, well, you should go check with the other workforce policies to find out what you're supposed to be doing about your personal use. It seems to me you should say in this section, some kind of statement about, so that people are not constantly on social media for their own benefit during the workday.
Selectman Green.
Yeah, page five and six, you talk about all the things that people should not do based on using their best judgment. In many policies, as I understand, there's also some language about, you should be aware that the employer may take into account some of these bad things that you put up on social media, and disciplinary issues. And I'm thinking about situations where we found police who have been involved in violent actions, having social media pages that indicate that they are way beyond just being violent, that they are involved with, you know, criminal terrorist organizations, like the Klan.
Not in Brookline.
No, not in Brookline. Well, we hope not.
I'm not aware of this.
But the idea that, you know, they should be aware that, you know, we have a right to, I don't know, what do we have a right to do? Those types of social media-
Are you talking about at work, or are you talking?
No, I mean, if on my social media contact, or-
Their Facebook page, they have a white hood on.
All right.
So, if it's home-
What line offensive thing would be?
We are not going to impinge on individuals' freedom of expression and freedom of speech in their homes. But if it relates to the workplace, so if they're using it at the workplace, you know, no porn on your cellphone at your desk. So, if it's, if you're in the workplace and you're using it, or if there's a nexus when you're using it outside, and we've had some instances of this, where we get a complaint because so-and-so represented, they were a Town of Brookline X, Y, and Z, and what they said to me was offensive. So, if you are in your own home, representing yourself as an agent of the town, we have a right to say something, or if you're in the workplace, we have a right to say something. But if somebody is at home and doing something in private and not affiliating themselves with the town in any way, you're really limited.
Yeah, but I mean, if somebody was, I think Bernard's example, okay, is somebody, say, is, for instance, a police officer, and they're advocating some kind of violence or, you know, against some ethnic minority or something on Facebook-
And we become aware of it?
And you become aware of it, now, wouldn't that be conduct unbecoming, an officer?
It could, but I would want to talk to a constitutional attorney about this, because there's a huge freedom of expression and freedom of speech. If they are identified some, so, on a Facebook page, if up in the corner it says Brookline Police Officer, yes. Right, they shouldn't be saying that they're a Brookline Police Officer, because once they put that up there, like, I think my Facebook page says that I'm the Director of Human Resources for the Town of Brookline, so-
There you go.
I might change that tonight. No, but it can get very dicey, but these are things that have got to our attention, and we deal with them, we really do, it has, they have come to our attention before. And certainly, if that did, we would take corrective action, whatever that would be.
So, I'm going to suggest we not vote this tonight, and I would like you to look at the section on Admit Mistakes. I have no problem with admitting mistakes, but I do have a problem with the way it's worded, strike, where we would routinely be striking through the error and making the correction. Is that the right thing? Where, you know, sometimes it is, and sometimes you want to just get the correct information out, and then in the background, keep a record. So, I think, I think you can, you know, be a little more nuanced there, and fix a few of the typos that we've identified, but, you know, in general, I think it's fine.
And I would like them to think about saying something about not excessively using social media while on the, for your personal use, while you're on the job.
Well, I think you can differentiate between, and there are times when an employee is in a town facility, but they're actually on their own time, like lunch, at lunchtime. And so, I do think you can differentiate, if they're at, they're sitting at their desk, and it's 9:30 in the morning, and they're supposed to be working on X, Y, and Z, they're not supposed to be on social media, their personal use, that is. And I think you can differentiate that. I agree, it's difficult to enforce, but I think most people want to do the right thing. And what is the right thing? We need to make sure people understand what the right thing is, and give them that guidance. So, you know, it's not a mean thing we're saying, it's because we want people to pay attention to their work, and their job is at that hour of the day, and that's their primary role. If it's their own time, like lunch, or a break, or whatever, that's different.
Well, I think that what we can do, because when you try to say you can use it here and not use it there, we live with very, people who have very busy lives, working parents, I mean, they may check their social media on their phone at their desk to see if their child came home, right? So, but what we can say is the use should be reasonable, and I believe that's defined, right? And if it's not defined in here, it does refer to the IT policy, we can put that definition in here. And we can also make a statement that says something to the effect of, in, under no circumstances should the use, personal use of social media impact your job. I mean, we can say something like that, I think that that is what you're talking about, and I think that that is the intent.
Okay, anything else? I think we've come through this one.
So, just so you know, we have, our HR board is on the 16th, yes, so we'll be back shortly, because we'll make these changes, we'll have that committee look at it, and we'll be back, thank you.
Sure. Okay, moving on to the Waldo Street 40B eligibility letter, and the planning department has worked up the draft, I had some input, I think the letter pretty much captures the comments we heard from the public, and also the comments from the board. The tone of the letter, well, it starts out with a statement in bold, the Brookline Board Selectmen urges mass development to deny Chestnut Hill Realty's application for determination of eligibility. And this is the first time we have taken this step in this go-round of 10 40B applications. So, this is really the strongest, most strident of our letters, and I think that's reflective of the nature of the proposal, a 21-story tower that would be too tall for the Seaport District as a hazard to aviation, though I don't know if it would be deemed a hazard to aviation here, but it's certainly a hazard to Coolidge Corn. And for the public who doesn't have the benefit of having the letter in front of them, I'll just summarize, first, we highlight the fact that we, in no other letter have we asked a denial, so we try to highlight the fact that we're being judicious in that request. We comment on the building's topology, height scale, massing, and out of character of the adjoining and nearby properties around there, and in fact, any area in Brookline, there's nothing comparable to it. We comment that we believe it will be the tallest building in the metropolitan area outside of the Boston Cambridge Core.
Do we really want to say that? I mean, there are plenty-
Is that true?
Yeah, I'm not sure it's true. BU has dormitories that are probably-
Well, that's in Boston.
Not Boston Core.
They have-
I think that's a risky statement.
Okay, is it, is it true?
I don't know, Mr. Chairman, that was your contribution.
Well, it has to be true. You shouldn't take everything I say unquestionably.
That's why I said the draft. Bernard may be correct, there's some very tall buildings at BU.
Okay, we'll take it out.
Which is one of them.
How about this, "We believe it will be one of the tallest buildings in the metropolitan area out of," yeah, that's safer.
Yeah, that's, because you can believe anything you want, right.
"We comment that a massive high-rise is unethical to the residential neighborhood and commercial area, and is, we believe, violation to the 40B design guidelines. It fails miserably, a quote, in meeting the fundamental guideline that 40B development honors its surrounding context, and respect for that matter, even recognizes existing development patterns." We have a few of the perspectives. We comment on the fact that it's in a national register district-
Eligible for, prior mistake on my part.
So, okay, so you will make-
It's corrected now.
Individually eligible for listing it.
Correct.
Okay, got it. "We comment also that the site, the town believes that the site does in fact want redevelopment, and we comment on the fact that we have constituted the committee, and the developer has agreed to work with that committee in a, trying to come up with an alternative proposal." And the fact that we believe that this, using the threat of a 40B undermines the intent of the statute in using it just as a threat to get another development. There's an interesting statement in here, which I think Selectman Green brought up, which I think is a very good statement, that it, we believe it undermines the intent of 40B in that it actually works counter to the stated goals of affordable housing, and commenting on the level of rents going as high as $13,500 a month for- And commenting on the level of rents going as high as $13,500 a month for a four-bedroom penthouse where the applicant's representative actually stated that he couldn't afford to live here. And we believe that this could be a game changer for neighborhood rents in general. You know, there's certainly enough apartments to create a critical mass that could affect the entire market. Um, "We comment that we hope that mass development would be concerned about the damage this project would do to the whole 40B construct in that it's going to loom over its neighbor, undermine the character of the neighborhood, destroy visitors, literally and figuratively stand as a testament to misplaced and inappropriate and even destructive 40B development." And that's quite strident language coming from a board of selectmen, I think. Uh, "We comment on the shadows, the wind tunnel, um, the large number of cars." And also the comment on the fact that it's within a half mile, there are six other 40B projects totaling over 500 SHI-eligible units. And mass development should hopefully coordinate, as DHCD said in its letter granting us administrative relief, with the other agencies in granting the Pell and make sure that the neighborhoods aren't affected, looking at all these projects holistically. Um, and then it ends by stating that we hope that they will deny the Pell. So, with all that summary, I'll turn over my colleagues who may have some suggestions.
Yes, I have a few. I want to say, I love the sentence that you put in with Selectman Green's issue about this proposal epitomizes gentrification. It will drive up rents in the entire neighborhood and threaten the multicultural, ethnic, and racial composition of this neighborhood. I like that. It's great.
I wanted to add earlier and on page five and the sentence that... I don't know if you have the same version I do, but it starts with a luxury apartment complex. I wanted to say a high-end luxury apartment complex because I see places all over town saying luxury apartments. But $13,000 a month is in a whole nother category than what most people think of as even luxury units. So, I wanted to say something high-end.
Super luxurious.
Yeah, or whatever word you can think of. And then at the end of that paragraph, I don't know if this is going too far. You tell me. But I thought we might say something like, "We question whether the subsidy of such expensive units is a good use of public funds."
I would agree with that. I think that that is a critical question in this whole proposal.
Read that sentence back.
"We question whether the subsidy of such expensive units is a good use of public funds."
Taxpayer money. Appropriate use.
Yeah, I mean, you can play with that if you want, but something, uh, I want to suggest that they... This is...
I like, uh, if you could work in the phrase, "as a matter of public policy," as a matter of sound public policy, just then work off that phrase.
Or the irony that an affordable housing statute is being used for luxury housing.
At this level.
Yeah. But we want to get in that they're using... They're using public funds, you know, to, um... I mean, these guys get financing from these agencies for $13,000 a month units. I mean, crazy to me. Okay. And then in the second to the last paragraph in the... On that same page, it begins, "In light of the above, the Board of Selectmen respectfully requests mass development deny this application based on the outrageously inappropriate size, massing, scale, and the effect that these very expensive luxury units will have on the housing market in Brookline."
Will have on the...
And the effect that these very expensive luxury units will have on the housing market in Brookline. I don't know if housing market or housing, uh... You can play with the words, but that's... That's my comments.
I have a few things as well. First, I think the entire board should sign this letter. And I think I would hope my colleagues would agree with me. So...
I do.
What would be the purpose of that?
I think it just adds added strength rather than just...
It signifies that it's a unanimous decision by this board and that we stand behind what we are writing here. It's not just a direction to the chair, but it is rather...
The... My only comment on that is one of practical expediency in that this has to go out on Thursday. There's a snowstorm threatened, so you all would have to make it to Town Hall sometime tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm gonna... If you can have a new version. I'm here tomorrow morning. I think I'm here until 11:00 and something, so...
Can you get into the building tomorrow, Selectman?
Tomorrow. With respect, Mr. Chairman, I don't have to get the application, the response until Friday.
Yeah, but...
I know, it's pushing it, but...
Yeah, but if we got a foot of snow...
Remember the morning, late morning if you need me to...
Why don't we do this?
I'd like to take out outrageously if I'm gonna sign it.
What's... Where is that?
Another one of these unnecessary, hypocritical words, outrageously inappropriate. It's inappropriate.
Can you tell me the paragraph?
I'm sorry. It's just one of my little... How about page five, secondary?
It's the same, "In light of the above," where I may have suggested...
How about extremely?
Yeah.
Inappropriate.
No, no, this is... No, this is... All of them are inappropriate. This one is ridiculous. And I think some stronger word than just inappropriate has to be used.
I think you're undermining your persuasiveness of the argument.
I have a couple more comments. You guys can argue over word choice.
As long as I know what the final decision is.
Um, so, on the first page, we refer to the application submitted by the Coolidge Residences at Brookline LLC. And then in the next paragraph, we refer to Chestnut Hill Realty. So, I think we just need to knit the two together and make sure that mass development understands that they're effectively one and the same. On page four of the letter, in that first paragraph, midway through, we're talking about the committee being convened and its, uh, the goal to deliver something at the Fall Town Meeting. I would add the Fall 2017 Town Meeting, just to stress the immediacy of this, that we're not dragging our heels for 12 or 18 months. Um, in that next paragraph, still on page four, about oh, four lines down, I would actually strike the word downtown. So, just read, "Well-being of our commercial..." Strike downtown, excuse me, replace it with, um, "Primary Commercial Area." I'm just objecting to the notion of downtown. It makes me think of larger buildings and I want to stress the fact that that's not Coolidge Corner. It's a busy place, but it's not a vertically tall place. Um, and then my final comment is you quote what I assume is one of the regulations in that same paragraph.
It's actually from the statute.
Okay, the statute. I just want to make sure that it's an accurate quote. It didn't make sense to me when I read it. Right now, it reads, "Is to permit a city or town to point jointly with city or towns to promote the greatest efficiency in economy, so on and so forth." It doesn't... It doesn't seem like the way the 40B operates, at least as I understand it, sitting on this board.
Well, I'll double-check the quote, but ironically enough, 40B is within a statute designed to promote regional planning, which is ironic to say the least.
Right.
I think it should be other cities and towns. I mean...
Well, I confirm the quote. That's all I have. We can circle back to a word choice conversation.
Yeah, and you should probably put in the cite there, the statute.
Actually cite it, sure.
Um, I have no problem with outrageously, but I'm willing to go to extremely. But I think... I think this one is way out of the norm, not just... All of them are way too big for their locations, but this one is way, way too big to me, so...
If you want to... I mean, my opinion is, if you want to be persuasive, you want to put in the facts, not your feelings.
Perhaps if you could find a synonym for inappropriate and avoid...
No, inappropriate's fine.
No, something strong.
It's an appropriate word.
Well, I'm willing to go with extremely if people...
Very.
Blatantly.
Yeah, very.
Okay. You know, the whole tone is very strident, so if...
And strident undermines your persuasion.
No, I... You know, I... We've written other letters that have cited many issues with projects and by and large, I think these authorizing agencies have kind of ignored them. So, I think...
No, that's not entirely true. Mass housing... We wrote a very strong letter to mass housing on 1299 and we didn't get everything we wanted, but...
But it was a very strong letter. So, I agree with Allison that I think this needs to be, and certainly is, a very strong letter.
Right. I'm not saying it shouldn't be.
I don't want to tone it down too much.
We're talking one word, which I... And if you remove it, it's not going to change the tone of the letter.
Well, let's take a vote on it.
And if you want mine, if you want me to sign it, you're gonna have to tone it down. And I'm fine with it.
The whole thing or that one word?
Neil signing it. If you want me to sign it.
Okay, then I think we should just have Neil sign it.
Over the word I raised?
No, he wants to tone the whole thing down.
No, I said that one word. And I think the other issues that I had have been addressed.
All right. Can we say very inappropriate size?
Very inappropriate.
Okay.
Very is... Very is the word. Very ina... Very... Extremely, highly.
Highly.
There you go.
Highly. I like that.
Highly? Is that too strong for you, binoculars?
It's not a question of strong. It's... The strength is in the facts that you lay out in the words inappropriate, um, you know, et cetera. The added outrageous, you know, the feeling that... You know, all that undermines the persuasiveness of the article.
You know, this isn't, A, it's not going to a court. It's going to a state agency. And they see their mission as approving these things. And I think we have probably used the word inappropriate in every single one that we've sent in. So, this one, we, I think, have to convey is worse than the others.
Yeah. But here, we have very concrete reasons why it's inappropriate. And those are strong, they're persuasive. So, let's use highly.
Highly is the word. Okay, so, I will move. So, can you get into Town Hall tomorrow?
Probably, yeah. I have a meeting at 7:30. I'll try to...
7:30 PM?
AM. Well, you're talking about tomorrow morning, right?
No, anytime. You could be... You could come here tomorrow and you weren't home for work.
You can come Thursday morning as well, but we're just concerned about the storm.
Yeah.
So... Okay, so, you know what? Why don't we take a vote authorizing me to sign it just in case we can't all of us get in and then... So, we'll agree to sign... So, the first vote will be, we'll do a contingent vote. In case not all of us can get in, it'll authorize me to sign. But, uh, so we'll have a backup plan in case something happens. Okay? So, I will move that we approve the letter to mass development as amended and authorize the chair to sign in case all the members of the board are unable to make it to Town Hall tomorrow. Okay?
Town Hall, I assume, is open tomorrow evening for various meetings and things. So, Allison could arrange to...
Find a place to have me sign it, sure.
Yeah.
To leave it for Bernard.
Yeah. If you have your key fob to get in the building, you can make arrangements with Stephanie to leave it out on the counter for you or something like that and...
Well, I can come in in late morning.
Yeah, I can come in late morning, too.
Okay. I can come in sometime tomorrow. Okay, so, that's the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Nardine?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye with the word highly.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Statement of the Board of Selectmen Regarding Immigration Policy. And we had a discussion last week with two competing, um, versions of a statement. And I think we all agreed that the version drafted by Selectman Green was the direction we wanted to go. And Selectman... And with some wordsmithing. And I'll thank Selectman Green and Franco for doing some wordsmithing. And then I believe Selectman Daley has some suggested change. So, why don't I let select somebody, Selectman Green? Talk to us.
I don't know if you want to read this. One thing we have to do is put in the actual warrant article.
Yeah, we do. That's done. Okay, that's done. So, actually, why don't... Why don't you summarize the statement? Or you can read it if you wish.
Well, I'll read parts of it. "The Brookline Board of Selectmen is deeply concerned by the Trump Administration's recent statements and immigration policy changes. While the Board, along with the rest of the world, continues to try to understand the implications of the Administration's unprecedented actions, we wish," not wishes, hypostonia, this... I think you're reading from an old version of it. Really? It says February 7th. February 5th.
Oh, there's a newer one, though, February 7th, that was in our stuff tonight, which... Yes, I tried to edit February 5th, thinking that was the latest one, but February 7th. Is that newer or not?
There's two versions floating around.
Okay. So, someone must have retyped this because in the version that I sent to Selectman Franco, it doesn't...
It'd say wishes.
Says wish.
Yeah. Okay, so, keep going.
It's confusing.
Maybe the February 5th one is the better.
Yeah, I'm thinking the February 5th one is the better.
Okay.
"We wish to reaffirm certain guiding moral principles that the Board believes Brookline values as they relate to the people who have been targeted by the President's executive orders, which includes our commitment to providing welcome and sanctuary to all Brookline residents and visitors regardless of immigration status. Because of these principles, Brookline's Board of Selectmen strives to protect the safety and well-being of all Brookline residents and visitors regardless of immigration status by supporting the health, mental health, well-being, safe haven, and sanctuary of refugees and immigrants, whether documented or not. We believe the actions of the Trump Administration in targeting and denigrating immigrants and refugees has created an atmosphere of fear and hatred in the country and potentially in Brookline. We also believe that an attack on one group will lead to attacks on other groups as the increased incidence of anti-Semitic attacks in Massachusetts illustrates, and that attacks on immigrants, refugees, and other groups must be resisted and combated by all legal means." And then we talk about the warrant articles. "We further reaffirm our support for the sentiments expressed in Town Meeting warrant articles," whatever the number is, voted... Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Voted at the November 2000... Uh, 1985 Town Meeting. And warrant article 26, voted at the November 2000... voted at the November 2006 Town Meeting concerning safe sanctuary in Brookline for immigrants and refugees from all countries regardless of their immigration status. And Selectman Daley wanted to add...
Oh, yeah, I wanted to add, "In addition, the Town will respect the status of those who are lawful permanent residents and visa holders." You wouldn't think we even needed to say that, but there, some of them are under attack as well.
Yeah. Threatened with being under attack.
Well, no, some of them, some people who had visas and green cards were detained already. I mean, I think they've been let go now, but...
But there are proposals to extend it permanently to it. "The recent developments in Washington portend overreaching enforcement of existing immigration laws that threaten," without the S, "to violate the Constitution and laws of the United States, including international treaties respecting immigrants and refugees that are part of the United States federal law, and undoubtedly in violation of long-established American moral principles." Now, I put in that treaty stuff because we are signatory to at least a protocol of a refugee treaty that protects refugee status, and when you, when the country enters into a treaty under our Constitution, that is federal law. It's not, you know, some foreign thing, it's federal law, so. "The likely aggressiveness of the new Administration's actions is evidenced by its threat to commandeer local police forces to perform immigration status checks and enforce immigration laws that are solely the responsibility of the federal government." In response to these developments, and then we lay out, you know, basically four things that we are urging be done. Number one, we have asked the Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations Commission to look at police procedures with respect to ICE detainers as well as other things. Secondly, we talk about, "The Town will make available support in terms of health, mental health, and education, et cetera, to all residents and visitors, including immigrants, et cetera." And we're asking Town Council to work with other cities and towns and the State Attorney's General's office to develop legal strategies and measures necessary to protect the Town against any punitive measures. And then finally, we ask that what we're calling civil society, meaning houses of worship, service organizations, et cetera, also be part of this policy, as part of this effort by the Town as a community to be, to provide sanctuary to people who are under attack.
So, one of the concrete things that you kind of glossed over in your summary is that, "No other Town employee shall ask for information on the immigration status of any person unless reasonably necessary for the provision of services by Town employees." So, we're making some policy statements.
And maybe we should read those four items, I mean, if you want.
Okay, so, these are the concrete policy statements. Well, the first one is, as Selectman Green said, "We've asked the Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations to review the current policies of the Police Department and recommend any changes it believes are warranted." And I believe that commission is beginning its review, and I believe they met last night, and that's continuing. And the more I read about it, the more I'm actually glad we've asked for a careful review. I think one of the, one of the things highlighted in just the way the new Administration just issued an executive order without proper vetting, it just, it just shows that in government, at all levels, you need to be very careful and look at your intent and also your unintended consequences, and that just wasn't done, and I think we need to just be very careful in our review and kind of model how we need to be vetting policies appropriately.
Why don't you actually read, or I'll read it.
You can read it.
The exact words. "The Board of Selectmen has initiated a review of the Police Department's policies as they relate to responding to varying types of requests for assistance by U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement," that's ICE. "The Board has elected to solicit the input of the Town's Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations by asking the Commission to review the current policies and to recommend any changes it believes are warranted, especially changes related to the Police Department's interactions with immigrants and refugees. Town services and resources will be made available to provide for the health, mental health, education, shelter, sustenance, and well-being of all of our residents and visitors, including immigrants irrespective of their legal status, and refugees. No actions against any person within the Town of Brookline shall be based solely on that person's status as an immigrant or refugee, and no Town employee shall ask for information on the immigration status of any person unless reasonably necessary for the provision of services by Town employees. The Board of Selectmen directs Town Council to work with other towns and cities and the State Attorney General to develop legal strategies and measures to protect Town actions and to defend against any punitive measures undertaken by the federal government against state and local governmental entities." And that relates to, for example, attempts to take away any funding from the federal government, where we have, I think, a very strong, strong position in stopping that. "The Board of Selectmen further requests that Brookline Civil Society, including houses of worship, service organizations, political entities, nonprofit organizations, educational institutions, and individuals, one, learn about, two, provide support, welcome, safe haven, and sanctuary, two, and three, help integrate into the fabric of our community, all resident or visiting immigrants irrespective of their legal status, and all refugees."
I'm very proud of this statement. I think it's strong, I think we set great policy direction here, and I think it stands in contrast to some of the other statements I've seen in recent weeks on this topic, which are great in terms of their verbiage and their intent, but we go one step further and actually commit to some substantive things and provide some great policy directions that I, again, I'm very proud of, and I think it's a great, a great statement.
Selectman Heller?
Well, I would like to say that I'm proud of both Selectman Green and Selectman Franco, who actually did this on behalf of the Board, but more than that, they've done it on behalf of Brookline and the people of Brookline who really want, I believe, the majority of people really want this, and see that this, these measures that are being taken by this Administration are, you know, it's hard to describe them in terms strong enough
Yeah.
to how hard they are, and they just seem to me to undermine the fabric of our laws and our morality and our integrity as a country, and it's very distressing, so I'm pleased that I'm working on a board with two people who have really stood up and taken the challenge and done a great job. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good. I feel like I'm living the first 50 pages of a Margaret Atwood book.
I have all the changes to give you, Kate, and then tomorrow, when it's cleaned up, I think, could you send a copy over to Lloyd Gellino so he can just send it out to his...
Yeah, I think this, too, takes the direction given to us by Town Meeting on two separate occasions over the last 20, 25 years, and puts a little more meat on the policy direction to the Town, but there's still an outstanding piece related to the Police Department that I think we need to be careful, and I'm glad we have a group working on that.
And I'll say the group is very capable, very dedicated, and I think we're gonna come up, they're gonna come up with a policy that is going to be unique, uniquely good in dealing with this situation, because it'll be clear, it will be effective, and it's good.
Okay, so, what I will do is offer a vote to accept the Statement of the Board of Selectmen regarding, regarding the executive orders on immigration policy as amended.
As amended, yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Okay, one last item of business, and that is some Board and Commission appointments. So, Ms. Gough?
Okay, so, we have a few appointments for three boards, the first of which is the Board of Assessors, and we have one available seat and one applicant, Gary McCabe, who is our Town Assessor. So, all those in favor of Gary McCabe, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Gary McCabe is reappointed. For the Transportation Board, we had to cancel our interview today, so that means that there is one seat available and two candidates seeking appointment. I'll read them in order as they're listed on your sheet here. All those in favor of Jonathan Kupst, I hope I pronounced that right, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think I heard enough for that. I'll just say Judith's name just in case, Judith Kidd, all those in favor of Judith Kidd, say aye. I'm hearing none, so Jonathan Kupst is the appointed person for the Transportation Board. Then the Planning Board, there is one seat available and three applicants, and I will read them in the order that they're listed here. All those in favor of Susie Roberts, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those in favor of Ben Olson, please say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of Alan Mountjoy, please say aye.
Aye.
So, it looks like we have...
So, let's, so, it's 1-2-2, so let's drop off the...
The first one.
The first one and redo it.
Start again, okay. So, all those in favor of Ben...
No, I'm sorry, just talking about...
Could I ask that we hold this until next week, and I have the opportunity to reread the resumes and think about it?
Okay, that's fair.
Thank you.
Okay, and that concludes business for tonight.